Everyone for joining us today for a zoning commission work session. We had to postpone one that we'd scheduled last month. So I appreciate everyone making the time tonight and fighting through the technical difficulties to join us. Tonight, I'm gonna present a PowerPoint and I'm gonna try to keep it short and sweet. Respect everyone's time and then we'll have a little bit of time for discussion. So I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen with everyone.
We need to do this.
Yeah, that's right. Alright. Alright, can everyone see the screen?
Yes.
Great. So, good evening again, thank you for continuing to operate during this crisis. Is anyone having technical issues that we need to sort out before we continue? Hearing none, gonna go ahead and move forward. So the first thing I'd like to do is administer oaths of office to Mr. Jonathan Hung and Mr. Jeffrey Brown. We're gonna start with Jonathan's, I think. So John, Lori's gonna walk you through the oath and then like I said, we sent you that paper. If you'll print it, sign it, send it back to us, we'll get it all filled out with our signatures and the notary mark and everything, alright?
Have you got, have you got that handy? Can you read from it?
I can read from it, yes.
Okay, let me, let me start out. I hereby certify that I have this day appointed Jonathan Hung to the position of full board member for the Beaver Creek Township Zoning Commission. Said appointment is to expire the thirty-first day of March, two thousand twenty-five. And then Jonathan, I need you to read the oath of office.
Sure. I, Jonathan Hung, being duly sworn, say that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio and will faithfully discharge the duties as a member of the zoning commission for Beaver Creek Township, Green County, Ohio.
Thank you, sir, and welcome to the full board.
Welcome, John.
Thank you.
Jeff, do you have, did you get yours to where you can read it?
I do, I have it printed out in front of me.
Alright, let me go ahead and read yours then. I hereby certify that I have this day appointed Jeffrey Brown to the position of full board member, excuse me, it should be alternate board member, for the Beaver Creek Township Zoning Commission. Said appointment is to expire the thirty-first day of March, two thousand twenty-five. And go ahead and read the oath of office.
I, Jeffrey Brown, being duly sworn, say that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio and will faithfully discharge the duties as a member of the zoning commission for Beaver Creek Township, Green County, Ohio.
Thank you, sir, and welcome to the board.
Jeff, we'll have to email you a corrected copy of that for you to sign, so look out for that after the meeting.
Yeah, I, I was doing it real fast this afternoon and I missed putting alternate on yours.
They never done that.
Alright, so thank you and congratulations, welcome to both of you. I wanted to quickly update the zoning commission on the cases that you had worked on in the previous session. So case number eight twelve, the signs article, Article twenty, was passed by the trustees earlier today. We updated the resolution online and sent out a news flash on the website alerting the residents to the changes in the code. So, thank you again for your support on that, we're excited.
Will we provide board members with new hard copy to replace Article twenty in their current hard copy of the code?
We'll make sure we get you guys, we can either send you a PDF that you can print or we can print out copies and mail them to you. So maybe shoot me an email at the end of the meeting and let me know what you prefer.
Jeff probably doesn't have a book yet.
No, he needs a book.
We'll have to get you a book.
And John, I don't think John has one either.
So your books will be updated before you get them?
And then case number eight hundred and thirteen, the pools text amendment was not accepted by the trustees. So that section is gonna remain the same as of now. Those residents who submitted the text amendment may continue. Their next option is a referendum effort. I, we don't know if that's gonna shake out, but that is the way that they can move forward if they so choose. But as of now, what we've done is the folks that their pools are, you know, now they're formally out of code. We had given them kind of a moratorium on enforcement while this action was being considered and now we've let them know that a month from when the stay-at-home order is lifted, they, their pools will need to be in compliance or will begin enforcement actions against them. So we feel like that's a pretty fair shake, especially considering that many of them pulled permits, you know, that said they required a fence and then built the pool without the fence. So we feel like we're giving them plenty of time to get their pools into code. So that's the update, any questions on that from anyone?
I have a question. So you said that referendum was their next option? And so if they were to put into process the referendum before the thirty days, would it still be? How does that work? Does it matter?
So we would have to consider that and if that kind of crossed that bridge when we come to it, I would like to think that knowing that they're probably not gonna be able to get it onto this upcoming election, you know, the one that's in. So the next one would be November. And I don't think we'd be comfortable giving them a moratorium until November. I mean, that's an entire pool season that they get to be out of code and it's a safety issue. Clearly, that was the issue at stake originally. So I don't think that would be the way we go.
We might have to talk to Dawn.
Yeah, we would certainly bring in Dawn, you know.
I was just curious, because it seems to me that whatever you have written in a letter would be imposable, but then they have this other option and I didn't know if they were allowed some sort of due process because of it. It's just a question, it's not that.
No, it's a, it's a good question, Ann, it's, it's a very good question and one that we've kind of not even really thought about yet.
There may be language in the revised code that enforcement action automatically stops pending the outcomes of the election. We don't need that.
So one thing that Dawn told us was that we, we're not changing anything in the code. We're rejecting the proposed change because that kind of changes a little bit. That gives us a little bit more authority to, to begin enforcement because it'd be one thing if we imposed a new rule that didn't exist before and then immediately started enforcing it without any chance for an appeal. But this is an existing code that has, you know, been ignored and now, you know, kind of the time has come. So it is a safety issue. Again, we would be talking to Dawn, but my personal thought is I don't know that that's the route we necessarily wanna take is just letting them have a whole summer without a fence around their pool.
Yeah, yeah.
So yeah, but thank you for that question, Ann.
Yeah.
Any other questions about the cases eight twelve and eight thirteen? Alright, hearing none. I wanna move on to what I wanted to discuss with you all tonight. Again, thanks for being here. At our last meeting, at the end of it, we had a discussion about a highway business district or an overlay district. This was kind of a, an exploratory discussion. It was something that had been in the works for the zoning commission in a previous meeting and had kind of stalled out there with some next steps being outlined, but no timeframe for those implementa, for the implementation of those steps. So we had a discussion about a highway overlay district and what that might provide the township and what next steps we might need to take to do that. We had a lot of great questions, a lot of good discussion. And, you know, we've had quite a bit of time to dig deep into some projects lately. So having done some research and a little bit more reflection on this, I think that our office is looking to kind of go in a bit of a different direction at first. We reviewed the county land use plan and our land use plan and looked and saw that a lot of our zoning map does not currently match what we see on the ground, what's the actual use and/or the county land use plan, so.
Which is also under revision right now.
Right, right, and that's kind of, we have this opportunity now to influence the revised county land use plan with our own plan and also to kind of clean, do a little bit of housekeeping with our zoning to kind of match it to what we see on the ground. So we're looking to shelve right now plans for a, a business overlay district. That will probably come up again at a later time. Again, we still, by last, last, you know, action or whatever, we still owe the Board of Trustees action on this in the form of maps and things like that. And again, I can reference the, the meeting minutes from that meeting in two thousand and fifteen. But we do think at this time that work on that would be premature. So I'm gonna kind of go into why we think that. With the business overlay district, we wanted a couple of desired outcomes. These are what we were hoping to accomplish. A greater control over the development of the central business district along US thirty-five. So, you know, figuring out what makes sense for our community in terms of what businesses would locate there, those kind of things. We wanted some flexibility in the development choices along the highway corridor. So we wanted, you know, we wanted to involve the mixed-use PUD Valley Springs Farm that represents a, a very flexible development space. And then we also wanted to talk about green spaces and things like that. So we wanted kind of a, a, a patchwork of different spaces along that area. We also wanted to manage businesses' concerns about infrastructure upgrades like the Super Street project and other road upgrades and things like that and how those might affect their ability to attract customers, whether it's, well, and you all, or some of you know, as you were involved in two thousand and fifteen, that the original kind of impetus was they were gonna raise thirty-five and that would put the visibility of a lot of these businesses along it in jeopardy. So there was talks about raising sign heights and it kind of grew out from there. But that's one of the things that we wanna do is make sure that those businesses are not adversely affected by development. And then finally, we wanna make the best use of developables, developable space in the community. So we wanna make sure that, especially in this central district, that the best uses for the community are what ends up being developed in these spaces. And with that, we think that kind of a new direction is warranted for this effort. We wanna create a couple of new zoning district classifications. So right now, we have, you know, agricultural, residential, business, industrial, flood plain, we have all these designations. I think looking at other codes and looking at the uses that we see on the ground, excuse me, we wanted to create, and I'll go over them in more detail, a couple of new districts. Then we would rezone some of the parcels in that central business area to reflect the actual observable uses in the area. A lot of that space is zoned industrial and the actual use is business or even recreation. And so we wanna fit what we see on the ground to what is on the zoning map. Also, we wanna rezone parcels to reflect desired outcomes and land uses. So for instance, Glen Thompson Reserve is zoned industrial right now. It's never gonna be developed for industrial use nor should it be. In fact, it represents a really great opportunity for kind of an open green space, a recreation space for our community. It's right along that bike path. So that's one of the examples of a place that is, I feel zoned incorrectly and would be better served zoned a, a different way. And then finally, we, we have an emphasis, and this is, uh, this is kind of outlined in the new county land use plan as well. Traditional zoning focuses on this grid approach and each parcel must be zoned, you know, a certain way. And kind of the new theory behind zoning or a new way to look at zoning is the creation of spaces, of areas that meet a certain criteria. So a recreation space, a commerce space. And they look at it more along the lines of place-making than parcel-specific zoning. So that's kind of what we wanna follow as well, even though we have to still work the parcels in. I wanna show you guys, this is the existing land use map for the county land use plan. This is all of the Beaver Creek partnership area, which includes the central business district. Now, I don't know, can you guys see my cursor now hovering?
Yeah.
Okay, just making sure. So this is the area that we were talking about right here. I'm gonna now do a close-up of the area. It's a little grainy, so bear with me. If you look here, this is the Ankeny Soccer Complex. And if you go back, you'll note that it's, right here is this green open space conservation and recreation. Ankeny is in the blame use plan, look to be one of those green spaces. And so is Glen Thompson Reserve over here. Both of those are zoned industrial right now, which I don't think matches either their observable or their planned use. So that's one of the changes. And to do that, I'll go into this a little bit later, I'd be looking at creating recreation districts. Additionally, this chunk right here, which is premier home improvement, that's zoned industrial now and the use is very clearly business. It's commerce, they're not, you know, heavy manufacturing. They are a, a showroom-type operation. So that's a business use, we feel like that could be changed and it would better reflect this is a business use and this is the industrial color here. There's some other areas as well that, let's go back to the map here. Up here in the top left corner, you got Wright Patterson Air Force Base. That currently is zoned agricultural for the township. I don't think that land will ever be used to farm again. We can only hope that the base will be there for way longer than we are. So I'm looking at creating an industri, institutional slash governmental district to mirror Bath Township, which the, a large portion of the base is also located in. They have it zoned as an institutional slash governmental district. There are a number of other areas around that could be looked at and be zoned to more correctly reflect what the use we see on the ground and what the land use plan is. But those were just some examples I wanted to share with you as we go into my kind of, what I've done is just taken the GIS map with the zoning layers on. So you have Valley Springs Farm, mixed-use PUD here. And this is what I was talking about. This area, Glen Thompson Reserve, is zoned industrial and I believe it should be zoned as some sort of green space or recreational district. I also think Jacob's Landing up here should follow suit. At, they're both potential destinations for people traveling the Creekside Trail Bike Path. This area here is zoned I-one and most of the uses are business. There are transmission shops and car dealerships and these car dealerships are zoned B-three and these are zoned I-one. I think that's a disparity that we can fix. Some, this little area is a point of contention, it might still remain zoned I. Or we could decide, hey, we really wanna encourage more of a business character, more of a commerce character to this area and zone it B-three and then encourage development of business-like uses. The Ankeny Soccer Complex, again, considering zoning it to a recreational space. And then this little area here, this is a, like a power sports sales kind of a place, like ATVs, things like that. And then you have some vacant lots here. These could be prime areas for serving the Ankeny Soccer Complex with things like even sports, athletic wear type places or restaurants or whatever to service the large number of people that come for soccer tournaments at the complex. So those are kind of some of the, the specific changes I've been looking at. And so now I wanna get into the different districts that I'm looking at creating. The first one I told you about was the institutional governmental district. That would be really for Wright Pat, it could have other uses if other, you know, federal institution, if the base expanded or if we had some sort of federal research arm that wanted to locate in the township, we could use that zoning classification. And then I have two different recreation districts, both an active recreation district and that would be the Ankeny Complex. And that's, you know, sports and, you know, parades and things like that would be allowable in those kind of districts. Whereas the passive recreation does not allow some of the louder and more potentially disruptive activities. It really is like a, a walking reserve or horseback riding through trails and other kinds of activities that are really meant to connect you with nature. So that is the passive recreation district. We wanna create an airport district. This is something that we see in most municipalities that contain an airport. It would have specifications for building height in the surrounding area and that's an FAA regulations thing. But it also, right now, a lot of the area around the airport is zoned I-one as well. And that would allow, you know, if somebody bought up a, a piece of that land and said, I wanna build a slaughterhouse here, right next to the airport, they're allowed right now. That's an I-one use, we would have no, that is a byright use of that land. So rezoning it to an airport use would kind of allow us to better control what kind of businesses go right there and so that it is a, a resource to the airport. You know, hotels, restaurants, things like that, that would serve the people coming in and out of the airport. And then finally, we're looking at a mineral extraction district. We have Phillips, American Aggregate, and some others that are doing mineral extraction. Right now, they're located in I-two districts. We feel that creating a special district that really reflects their specific use, not only again allows us to kind of better control where those entities operate and how they operate so that our citizens are, are less affected by it, but also we can work in things like land reclamation for those sites. So we can say, okay, when they're done extracting and, and processing there, then you have to reclaim it as, you know, a quarry lake or a nature reserve or other things. So we can put that language in the district. And it's just like a planning for the future kind of a thing. So those are the five different districts I'm considering creating. I've got draft language for all of them. We're not there yet. I wanted to just bring this to your guys' attention so that we can begin the process of the next steps. And I'll kind of go into what we would need to do in order to make this happen and also make, or rather, get buy-in from the residents. The first thing we'd need to do is engage the stakeholders. So the places that we're considering rezoning, we'd wanna talk with the businesses located there. We'd wanna talk with conservancy groups, we'd wanna talk with the county. We wanna get people's questions answered before we roll this out. So we'd wanna review the potential effects on rezoned parcels. If a parcel is rezoned from I-one to B-three, is that gonna affect people's taxes? Is that gonna affect people, businesses' ability to get a loan from a bank institution? I've already kind of begun that discussion with David Graham, the auditor. The short answer is, no, it shouldn't. Taxes, the auditor's office does not take into account the zoning district. They really just look at what's there on the site, what building is there and its valuation. So just, those are the kind of questions we need to ask, though. We'll need to, after that process, finalize the district language to take into account the things that we learned during our stakeholder engagement. And then, once we've done that, we would submit these to a regional planning committee review. They would give us their recommendation, just like with the cases that we just ran, eight twelve and eight thirteen. Then we take them back to you for a vote, for a discussion and a vote. And if you guys recommend them to the trustees, then eventually the trustees will need to pass the new language. And eventually, if we pass the new language, then we can work on taking individual parcels, or in this case, large chunks of parcels, and rezoning them to fit the observable uses that we're, that we're talking about here. So before I move on, I know that was like a big information dump. I wanna take a step back and see if anyone has any questions about what I just kind of went over.
Hey Max, this is Jeff. I just got a quick question, I think you already addressed this, I just wanted to clarify. So the tax ramifications on these parcels, there would be no change? They're currently tax-based on the business that's on the property, not the property classification itself?
That's correct. I was speaking with David Graham, the county auditor. He let me know that in valuing property and the taxes that they're gonna collect, they do not consider the zoning district. They just consider the building and the land and its valuation. Now, he mentioned, look, you know, let's say you changed a, a classification from industrial to agricultural. That limits what might be placed on the land and could therefore potentially devalue the land. However, if you're doing I-one to B-three, say, you have most of the same uses available, commercial uses. So he said that likelihood is near zero that these kind of zoning changes we're talking about would have an observable impact on the taxable value of these properties.
Thank you for clarification. There seems to be a quick bit of echo online. It seems like if people aren't talking, they probably need to mute their phones.
Yep, I think that's a good, a good recommendation.
So this is Ann and I have a few questions. First, the county land use plan is currently under revision, as I understand it, and seeking public comment perhaps at that level? And then there'll be some sort of an adoption after that? I cannot remember the process. Are we at the township level then supposed to do that in tandem? Are we supposed to do that retrospectively? Or is there a standard, if you will, that every so many number of years, we have to look at ours for recommended changes? That's my first question.
I don't know that we're statutorily bound by it, but we have in here a five-year cycle. Now, we haven't adhered to that for a long time. For updating the land use plan. The relationship between the county land use plan and the local land use plan is that the county plan typically follows the local plan more so than the other way around. It, it's a, it's the granting of respect to local autonomy. They'd rather reflect what we want rather than impose county standards over what happens locally. You can imagine how hard that would be.
Okay, so follow up to that question then, when is our five-year cycle?
A while ago.
A while ago.
Five years ago?
Yeah, that's a while. Okay, so.
Now, the county process. Now, the, the county process, uh, did, th- they had a, an open house planned for, I think, March twenty-fifth, but that was canceled. Um, and I believe they're planning, um, to try to do it virtually in some other fashion here in the not-too-distant future.
It's already in progress.
But, but it's, it, they're at the very beginning stage. They're not at the beginning stages of, of starting to craft the language that, that they want to see in their plan. The current plan is called Perspectives Twenty-Twenty, uh, the new plan. Their, the working title of the new plan is Perspectives Twenty-Forty. Theirs is a twenty-year plan. Um, they've, they're working with MBRPC, the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission, as a consultant on this. They haven't had any public input yet because they had to cancel that first meeting on the twenty-fifth. So, um, th- there's a, there's a lot of work yet to be done, is my point, on the county plan. And we've got time to do our work on the local plan, even if it's not a wholesale rewrite of the plan, if it's simply a series of amendments. Um, if they're necessary even. I mean, we don't, we don't even know that.
So that is.
We can do a series of amendments and submit them to the county, and then they'll be taken into consideration in the final iteration of the Perspectives Twenty-Forty Plan.
Right, so I'm just, um, and we don't have to answer this tonight. It's just something for you to think about. Is, is it strategic for us to take a look at that plan before we go down this, um, implement these, the strength? Something to think about.
So I, that's definitely a good question, and I think what, so, um, I think having these districts available to us as potential districts would allow us to kind of do that. We could, we could say, look, this is what we want to see, and we have the ability to rezon them this way, but we can stop short of actually doing that and rezoning the parcels if we want to wait for some more information from the county land use plan. Um, but then we can have those tools ready for when and if that makes sense. Does that, do you get what I'm saying?
I do get what you're saying, and so that's why I'm saying that maybe that's dialogue you guys can have. And then, as you make more decisions, we can, we can follow suit or we can talk about, you know, whether or not, which we're going to do first. Because I would think for us to, I think whatever we decide to do, based on what you've presented to us tonight, that, um, we do that in a strategic way that really has, oh, it, we, you know, spread the bracket really wide and make sure that we have, we'd buy in from the public. You on a slide, I believe it was called desired outcomes, talked about developable space. Is that defined somewhere? Like, what are we calling?
Okay. So developable space, as I'm using it here, is just area that either does not have a current owner or operator on it, so there are vacant tracts. Uh, you're talking about Valley Springs Farm. You know, it's, it's, it's zoned and ready for people to come and start building there, but people aren't yet. Um, you've got, also the definition is areas that exist now that maybe could have a use that is more beneficial to the community than what is currently, uh, in use. Like, for instance, Glen Thompson Reserve as a destination along the bike path versus a, you don't get me wrong.
Along the river.
Yeah, a conservancy space, something like that, rather than.
I followed that. I just didn't know if it had an operational definition that was in some sort of document that we needed to be really.
No, we're just a general sense of, you know, uh, development from one thing to another.
So the third question is, um, related to probably one of the last slides. And that was, um, we use, that, that one right there. We usually see, um, landowners, residents, property owners, um, coming to us with a zoning request, and we have that process down, right? Um, I see here that we would have to make some sort of proposal, um, after work sessions, et cetera, make the language changes, and then propose to regional planning zoning changes. But how does that go back to the property owner? And that, that's the part that has me a little bit, like, it's a different process. So I'm challenged by that, what that looks like.
I think if I'm understanding your, your question, that you're asking, where in that process does the property owner fit in, and do we need them to initiate it?
Yeah.
In order to move forward. So, um, good question. I would say that, in this case, the township itself would be the initiating kind of body. And we would, um, how do I want to put this? Uh, the involvement of stakeholders in this process is kind of how we get there. It's almost like we're asking them, hey, we see this potential, um, to make it better for you too. By having you zoned as a, you know, B-3, you can, you know, your signs might be a little bit more on point. Um, things like that, just quality of life improvements that they might see from a rezoning of, of the parcel that they're on. But in the end.
Bring up the ugly word like, ugly word, imminent domain. That's not what happens.
No, that's.
So you see what I'm trying to get at?
I do, I do.
Uh, right now, I would say it's unlikely that we would proceed with the rezoning of any individual parcel over vehement objections from the property owner.
Absolutely.
I believe it's legally possible to do so, but I, I don't see Beaver Creek Township doing that.
No.
And, and I don't see the zoning staff stepping forward to propose that.
I had to ask. I didn't think so.
So, so somewhere in between our analysis that this piece of property should be zoned B-3 rather than I-1 and the actual rezoning of that property by first the zoning commission and then the trustees, comes a lot of conversation with the property owner
Yep.
about exactly what the provisions of that new, um, zoning district are. And there may be some text amendments along the way to this, to the actual language of the zone, of each zoning district as we go along, too. We're gonna, um, the, the, in some ways, this is kind of a Pandora's box. We're going to open up, uh, uh, we're going to see one thing after another that we, that we think, oh, gee, we, you know, we need to change that if we're going to put this property in that district, that kind of thing. So, um, it's, it's going to take, going to take some work.
But we see that as an opportunity, you know, an opportunity to engage these residents, whether they're businesses, whether it's, you know, a sports complex, whether it's, say, nature preserve, talking to the people that have an interest in them and figuring out, you know, what might be missing from our code, uh, what might be extraneous in our code. Those kind of things will come from, I think, these conversations that we would have to have in order to pull this off.
But, but our intention going in is not to do anything over the objections of any property owner.
Okay, so I had to ask, know that.
Of course.
The other question then is. Okay, yeah, it's not a question. I think this is, like, we as a body, um, have to really get, we have to have the buy-in amongst each other and really have the hard conversations before we move this stakeholder engagement. And I think that's what you're trying to do at this point, because it really is a framework change. And you talked about that in the very beginning, Max, that it's not so much these individual parcels, but it's that crow's nest view of what the space is, what the potential has in that region right there, in that district.
The whole region, right.
Uh, and so, taking a bird's nest view of it as opposed to, and I, and I think in land, in the land use, that twenty forty, they talk about it being a conceptual perspective. And so, it, you know, we have to think very, um, hard about that because when you get to stakeholder engagement, they can move to the discussion of, that's mine over my dead body, you know, that, that kind of talk. And so, that's why I brought up those two.
Right.
Together. The list that has to be made is, is going to be tough, I think.
I think you're right. I think if we put in the, the sweat early, and when we present this to stakeholders, we've answered a lot of their que, or we've anticipated their questions, then we have a really good shot of, of convincing them of what we kind of already see, you know? Uh, if we do it right, we should not experience a whole lot of that vehement objection. But like Ed did mention, that's not, we're not interested in, uh, a drag-out fight. You know, if somebody is really opposed to this, we're not going to force it on them.
Well, I think, I think, um, yeah, and the consequence is, I mean, our goal is growth, right? We keep talking about opportunity, and it's about growth, and so the, um, the consequence is no growth, right?
Yeah.
Change with no growth is also the risk. So, I don't know, that, that, I got nothing else to contribute. I'm just talking out loud now.
Oh, I, I really appreciate it, Anne. I think that's a very important point. And it's kind of a, one of the pillars on which we're going to potentially build this is understanding that buy-in is critical, and if we don't have it, then the best we can hope for is change with no growth.
And, and as Max mentioned, the, this is, investing the sweat equity rate upfront is where Max is starting now, and I want to give him credit for this. I didn't do any of this work. He, he did it all. And, um, um, we, I, we're, we're very much looking forward to the day when we can meet in person again. The, these conversations are, are, um, awkward at best, um, over these electronic gizmos. But, um, w- we want to keep moving. We want to get your input. But, but we're really looking forward to a couple of, um, nuts and bolts work sessions in the not-too-distant future where we can all be in the same room together and, and look at pictures and have six conversations swirling around at the same time. That's, those are the kinds of meetings where stuff really gets done.
Yep. Giant Post-it notes, you know, the whole spiel.
Well, at this point, we're going to hear what, um, others who are in attendance think of what you've presented.
She wants others to respond.
Oh, oh, okay.
Well, this is John Huggen. I spoke to Max about, um, that's been a few weeks ago about this. And, um, you know, everything seems, it's a little bit more detailed than what Max and I talked about, when we did talk. So, you know, my perspective is, um, you know, I'm, I'm very pro-growth, and I think that, you know, with the commentary about, you know, making sure that we have buy-in from the local stakeholders, I, I really think that's the most important part. And, um, frankly, in my perspective, uh, adding a few, uh, new designations, if you want to call them that, uh, uh, or new, and, and allowing the stakeholders to input in what goes into their, their, their business community is going to be the key. I think we will get actually substantial buy-in, uh, from the owners, and I think that they will want to participate because really, it's their businesses. The only issue I think I have right now is, you know, with what's going on with, uh, the coronavirus orders, how it's affecting businesses, I think engagement right now is like the worst idea. Uh, I think a lot of the, you know, just knowing, a- and, and Max knows, you know, my firm, um, represents the Schmidt Auto Group, okay? And so, right now, they're worried more worried about staying open than they are worried about what's going on in the township. So, it's a really a tough time, and I know that we've got this, um, a timetable, but really, I, I'm hoping that we can at least wait until, um, I guess, our community's back to a semblance of normal order, uh, where these businesses on the strip are able to operate again. And then at that point, I think that's when we start to engage them, um, with the hope that we can get their input once they understand where they're going to be. So, that, those are my, that's my two cents right now. I, these are, these are great. I'm all for it. Um, you know, Anne mentioned, or maybe it was Kristen, uh, mentioned that the idea of the buy-in on this, uh, on this, on this commission. And I, I'm very much bought into the idea. Um, I guess my concern right now is just from a business perspective. I think a lot of people out there on the strip are hurting, and, and now is probably not the best time to start engaging them, so.
I think you're absolutely right, John. Thanks for that comment. Um, I should, uh, I should probably clarify that, in my mind, I see this body and our office putting in quite a bit more work, anticipating the kind of questions that people are going to have. It would probably take a couple of months for us to be ready to start engaging stakeholders. We can all hope that in that time, things will have started to return back to normal. Um, if not, yeah, you're absolutely right. This isn't going to be priority one for any business along thirty-five until normal business has been kind of resumed for a little while. Um, and so.
That's why now's the good time for work sessions with this group.
Yeah. But yeah, great comment. I think you're absolutely right, John. Anyone else?
I think it just needs some time to digest. I mean, really like having better zoning classifications to, not, limit's probably not the right word, but, you know, have much more appropriate land uses available in, in, in areas where there's infinite number of land uses, uh, currently available. So, I'm all for that as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Seth. Kristen or Jeffrey?
Uh, hi, it's Kristen. Um, I am in agreement with what you guys have talked about in as far as, uh, the changes to the zoning and how we're doing it. Um, and I do agree with the growth. The thing is, I want it to be more of a priority for me and what we're talking about and how we're developing around that whole corridor.
And I'm sorry, Kristen, you cut out there for a little while. Um, can you try that again one more time?
I don't know. Yes. So I, well, I'm agreeing here. I'll get closer to my mic. I am in agreeance with, um, the zoning that you're.
I don't think it's a micro, I think it's a connection issue. I'm sorry, Kristen, um.
Okay, well, I just go like this then. How's that?
Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that. Anyone else would like to comment or have any questions or anything like that? All right, so I really want to appreciate, uh, everyone's input just now, and thank you for listening. I want to leave you guys with two questions that I'm going to be trying to answer in this time that we have, and I'd like you to kind of keep them in your mind. And if, any suggestions that you might have, some of you have perspectives as business owners, as residents of the community, as parents, as, um, you know, that I don't have. So I'm, I'm asking for you to combine your perspectives with mine to help answer these next two questions.
Wear all your hats at the same time.
Yeah. Um, the first is, for stakeholder engagement, what questions should we be asking owners and operators of parcels if we want to get their buy-in to be rezoned into these districts that we're thinking about creating? You know, some of them we've addressed. Is this going to affect my taxes? Um, is this going to affect, you know, the kind of signs that I'm able to put up? The, uh, setbacks that I'll need to have on my building? Am I going to be legally non-conforming now? The setbacks that I'll need to have on my building? Am I gonna be legally non-conforming now? All those kind of things. Um, we've got, you know, we've done some, some work on this, but I want your input. So think on that. If you guys want to email me, if you guys want to have phone conversations, we can do that um individually, one-on-one. Uh, those kind of work sessions and your input will be incredibly valuable to me as I, as I keep trying to refine our stakeholder engagement uh phase. And then finally, and this is kind of part of that last one, but a- again, I'm not a business owner, I'm not a parent, I'm not a lot of things that some of you are. So I'd like to know if you were in their shoes, or just for your own edification, you know, what potential effects might rezoning parcels have on their owners' operators? And I'm gonna add also on residents. You know, what potential effect might, and this is positive and negative. So if we rezone Ankeny Soccer Complex to a recreational district, what effect might that have on our residents? Or the owners of the sports complex? Or the people that come from even out of state to, you know, to do these soccer tournaments, okay? So those two questions, I, I feel like if we can answer them thoroughly, then we will have a really good uh start on getting the kind of buy-in that we're hoping for. So I'll leave you with that. I think we, I think we got some um, some good work done tonight in terms of everyone kind of um giving their input and, and figuring out, you know, maybe over the next, this is not gonna, this is gonna be a long-term project. Um, we're gonna be meeting a lot if things go the way I'm hoping in order to work these things out. We've also got other things that are gonna be coming before you. Um, we've been in discussion with somebody who's looking to rezone from agricultural to residential. So on top of our normal business, we're gonna be working hard at this as well. So if everyone um, you know, thinks that this course looks okay, I'll just ask you to keep those questions in mind. And anytime you want to have a discussion with me or any ideas that you have, please email me, call me. I'm really looking forward to continuing to work with you on this project.
Yeah, it sounds good. Are you gonna send this uh presentation on?
Uh, yeah, once, uh, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna email everyone a copy of the uh PowerPoint when we're done with the meeting. Um, also, the video will be uploaded to our YouTube channel. So if you guys want to look at uh Beaver Creek Township's YouTube channel, you can get a video recording of this.
Of this meeting.
Of this meeting, yeah. Um, so if you want to go over what we talked about, or if uh Mr. Geist um, you know, is able to uh, you know, kind of fill himself in, uh, those kind of things. So um, yeah, we will definitely email you the PowerPoint right when we're done here.
Okay.
All right, so if um, if no one else has any other questions or comments, um, I guess I would ask, uh, do we need to call for adjournment to this?
No.
We could just kind of, okay.
Yep.
So if everyone's all right with it, I'm gonna go ahead and end the meeting. Again, I want to thank everyone for your time tonight and for your work with me. Um, I hope you're all staying safe and healthy. And uh, I look forward to our next regularly scheduled meeting. Um, I will, of course, keep you updated on what business may uh be a part of that. But as of right now, uh, we, like I said, we are looking at possibly having a uh rezoning application coming in. So be on the lookout for that.
Oh, true.
Yeah, we, oh yeah, that's uh, that's true. Um, so be on the lookout for those. Uh, everyone have a great night and thank you again for your participation.
Good to see all of you.
You too.
Thank you.
Bye.